Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, November 28, 2022. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from the meeting of October 24, 2022.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Mary Alice, second by Chandra. Any substantial corrections? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes.
There are no additions to the agenda. Next item is presentations and public input, and we're delighted tonight to celebrate some promotions in the fire department. Chief Dade?
Along with recognizing them for being promoted, they will also take their oath. And that oath is, it signifies their, their public commitment to the responsibilities and duties of the rank that they'll hold. So, let me get my helpers out here. And the first person that I want to bring up is Battalion Chief Greg Smith. Effective October 14th of 2022, Greg Smith was promoted to battalion, the rank of Battalion Chief. Greg Smith is a 24-year veteran of the Urbana Fire Department, and B.C. Smith is a technical rescue technician and has served on the department's honor guard.
Raise your right hand, please. And you can read along with me.
Aye.
State your name.
Aye. Greg Smith.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of Battalion Chief.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of Battalion Chief.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana. So help me God.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Battalion Chief Smith is going to be pinned by his four daughters, Madeline, Claire, Tessa, and Miss Thea. The next person I'd like to present to you is Battalion Chief Greg Kingston. Effective November 5th, 2022, Greg Kingston was promoted to the rank of Battalion Chief. Greg Kingston is a 24-year veteran of the Urbana Fire Department, and B.C. Kingston received the Heroism and Community Service Award from the Firehouse Magazine, was a Fire Officer of the Year recipient, and is a technical rescue technician. Tonight, he will be pinned by his wife, Miss Carrie.
Please raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. James Kingston.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of Battalion Chief.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of Battalion Chief.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana. So...
Acting...
Go ahead.
Sorry. Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Next person I'd like to present is Captain Matt Ennis. Effective October 31st, 2022, Matt was promoted to the rank of captain. Matt Ennis has 20 years of experience with the Urbana Fire Department. Captain Ennis is a fire investigator, technical rescue technician, and honor guard member. He will be pinned by his daughter Haley.
Aye. Matt Ennis.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of Battalion Chief.
Do solemnly swear that I will, I will faithfully execute the duties and positions of captain for the city of Urbana.
Battalion Chief?
Captain.
Captain, sorry. Chief? I just promoted you.
I denied.
In the county of Champaign, Illinois.
In the county of Champaign, Illinois.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
And the charter and the ordinances of the city of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Captain.
Matt is a good hugger. He does hug me like that, so... The next person I'd like to bring up is Lieutenant Michael Craig Dilly. Michael Dilly is the son of retired Chief Dilly...oh, gonna lose some of him. Effective October 31st, 2022, Lieutenant Michael Craig Dilly was promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Craig Dilly has 12 years of experience with the Urbana Fire Department. Lieutenant Dilly is the department's lead fire investigator and hazardous materials technician. Craig will be pinned by his wife, Kristen.
Aye.
Aye. Michael Craig Dilly.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of Lieutenant.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of lieutenant.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The state of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Lieutenant Dilly.
Next person couldn't be here this evening, and that's Lieutenant Blake Coons. Effective November 5th, 2022, he was promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Blake Coons has 11 years of experience with the Urbana Fire Department, and Lieutenant Coons serves on the city's health insurance committee, EMS service officer, fire investigator, technical rescue technician, honor guard member, and a paramedic. He couldn't make it this evening, so that's all the promotions that we have, unless Chase, the mayor's giving out promotions, so if you want to come on up. But, once again, I do, I do thank you guys for allowing us to do this and share this, this opportunity with you guys and, and their families. For our, for the men and women who take on the, the arduous task of being promoted, they have to dedicate themselves to the education and training that helps improve the communication within the city, within our department, and ultimately the safety of themselves and the citizens that we serve here. So, we thank you greatly. So, thank you.
Thank you for inviting us to begin a new tradition here in the city, and I promise next time I'll read the scripts better than I did. We now move on to public input. Portion of the agenda. Is anyone here to address the Urbana City Council? Then we'll move on to council input and communications. Any information sharing or comments from the council? Sharice.
Chief Dade, before you leave, and your, and your families, and the firefighters, and everybody, I just want to thank you for doing this, and for inviting us to, to witness these promotions. And I know that, that what these gentlemen have to do is a lot of work, even to be moved up. And I just want the department to know I really appreciate all that they do, and keep up the good work, and I hope that you are successful in your new positions. Thank you.
I guess I'd just say, here, here. Just really appreciate this opportunity. You all want to go and definitely have your night, but just thank you for letting us be part of, of this important moment. Really appreciate it, and very proud of our, our fire department. So, we're just glad to be able to celebrate this with you all.
Thank you. Yes, just want to echo what everyone's saying. Congratulations to those in their new positions. Thanks for bringing this in to see everyone, and thanks for the family for coming out and watching remotely, and that we're here too. So, feel free to reach out doorways of communications, some faces to our emails if there's anything. You guys have a lot of, you know, access on the streets in the community, so feel free to be in touch, please. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Okay. We'll move on to reports of standing committees. That'll be Councilmember Sharice Hersi for the Committee of the Whole.
Okay. Coming to you from the Committee of the Whole meeting from last week, I would am bringing on our consent agenda, resolution for approval. Resolution number 2022-11-089R. A resolution authorizing the acceptance of a DCEO grant, Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System Rehabilitation Project. Also, resolution number 2022-11-090R. A resolution approving the sub-recipient grant agreement with the law, with the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System, ILEAS, for your approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Jaya. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
For our regular agenda, ordinance number 02022-11-047. An ordinance amending a redevelopment agreement with Icon Hospitality LLC, the Royal Hotel.
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Resolution number 02, number, I don't know why I can't get this right. Resolution number 2022-11-087R. Resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for a justice assistance grant, JAG.
I'll second. Moved by Sharice, seconded by Chandra. And before you on the dais tonight, you have the corrected version with the, in the third whereas, the sentence, "The city of Urbana has declined to participate," that has been crossed out. And you have the correct language. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And our third resolution here is resolution number 2022-11-088R. A resolution approving the 2022 sanitation sewer intergovernmental agreement to replace the 1992 IGA.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Sharice. Moved by Sharice, seconded by Jaya. Further discussion? Grace?
I had a quick one, just wanted to point out that I got an email, I think maybe to all of us, from a resident who had concerns about accessing information about the sewer system. I guess we don't have Tim here tonight. I don't know if anyone present has some information, or if that's something we could follow up later.
I believe Carol does.
I talked to Tim about this earlier, and Mr. Debevek was given some limited information as related to his own property. The information, in terms of the system-wide information, is available through the GIS consortium, but you're required to sign a waiver, because we don't want people relying on that information as if it were completely fact-checked. It's, it's what we believe is true, but before anybody should make an investment in, in a, in a plan to connect to a sewer or whatever, we encourage people to do their due diligence, and they can do that according to what Tim told me, so I'm not the expert, but, you know, the Julie process where you have the, the utilities cited, well, they have something that's called the Design Julie, where things are gone, are cited in the field, so you can check to make sure the mapping is correct. But it was interesting, because Tim shared with me, there's a, there is a more accessible map, for instance, in the city of Danville, but in order to access the map, you have to click that you agree not to rely on the information in the map as if it were factually correct. So, I think that's something Tim would like to move towards, is having something that's available, but people would still have to basically agree to the waiver and, and not relying on that. So, that's some of the background for Mr. Debevek, but he was provided information that related directly to his property.
Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And that's all.
Thank you, Sharice. Reports of special committees, believe there are none, reports of officers.
I just wanted to make sure people were aware, if they're interested, there is a public meeting on Thursday night, December 1st, this week, 6:30 PM at Four Square Church, which is located at 2101 East Washington Street, and that's for the purpose of gathering public input on a proposed rezoning of the site at 1603 East Washington, which is the intersection of Washington and Lyman, it's the southeast corner, that we are proposing, the city's proposing to rezone from B3, which is general business, to R5 medium, high-density residential. This rezoning is a prerequisite to any multifamily residential development on the property, and you'll remember that that was the subject of a, an agreement that we had with the Housing Authority that we recently renewed to pursue a affordable housing development there. So, it's not specific to that development, it would, it's a prerequisite to pursuing that. So, just want people not to have the expectation that they're going to see renderings, or site plans, or whatever. This is just about a rezoning. But, anyone who's interested, I would encourage you to attend on Thursday.
Thank you. We'll move on to new business. The item on the agenda is Ordinance Number 2022-11-048, an ordinance approving a major variance for a garage variance at 705 South Urbana Avenue, it's CBA case number 2022 MAJ07. Nick Olson from CD is here to present.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be here with you all. So, this is a request by Richard Reynolds, the owner of 705 South Urbana Avenue, for a major variance to, to allow a garage to be rebuilt three inches from the south property line. The zoning ordinance typically allows accessory structures such as garages to be placed no closer than 18 inches to the property line, so a major variance is required. There is an existing garage on the property that's been there for over 70 years, and is approximately the same distance from the property line as what's being proposed. On November 16th, the Zoning Board of Appeals heard the case and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request, conditional on general conformance with the submitted site plan. Staff agree with the recommendation, finding that the criteria for a major variance have been met. The neighboring property owner to the south has written a letter in support of Mr. Reynolds' request, that would be the neighbor closest to the garage, as has one other member of the public. This is a location map where you can see the property on Urbana Avenue, east of Vine Street, and between Oregon and Washington Streets. The existing driveway and garage on the property are south of Mr. Reynolds' home. This is a site plan provided by the applicant, showing the approximate lot configuration. The location of the proposed garage is in red. You can see that it would be placed about 10 feet west of the existing garage to allow access between the back and side yards, but it would be about the same distance from the south property line as the existing garage. The existing garage is a two-car garage, but Mr. Reynolds would like to rebuild it a bit larger to allow room for two cars, along with yard equipment, which the existing garage can't quite fit. The existing garage is also quite old and not in great condition, and the new garage would still be within the allowed size limit for accessory structures. This is a photo provided by Mr. Reynolds to demonstrate why he wants to pursue a variance. The existing driveway on the lot is aligned with the current garage on the property, and directly north of the garage, or, sorry, directly north of the driveway. In the background of this photo, you can see a stairway and a window well that are connected to the south end of the lot. The two posts in the foreground of this photo show the approximate locations of the north wall of the proposed garage, with the requested variance on the right, and if he had to comply with current yard requirements on the left. You can see that even with the additional width on the garage, the north wall would still approximately align with the reach of the stairs north of the driveway. Otherwise, the wall would be placed further north than the stairs, which would then require difficult maneuvering around those stairs and window well when using the driveway, or potentially requiring placing the garage even further to the west, which could significantly increase the cost of the project and having to pave more driveway. Staff find that all the criteria for a variance have been met. The staff report goes into detail on the reasoning for each criterion, but to summarize, there are the particulars of the lot configuration and the driveway that we just discussed with the photo, and then as far as neighborhood character and any potential nuisance go, East Urbana is an old neighborhood that has a lot of non-conformances with garages, a lot are on or very near the property line. Some of these are on the same block as Mr. Reynolds' home, and the lot in question has already had a garage very close to the property line for a long time, and the neighbor to the south, who would be closest to the garage, has said it's okay. So, with that in mind, Zoning Board of Appeals voted with six a's and zero nays to recommend approval of the requested variance, conditional on general conformance with the submitted site plan, and staff agree with this recommendation, and in accordance with it, have prepared an ordinance approving the variance. I can take any questions for staff, and Mr. Reynolds is here in attendance with us.
Any questions for staff or Mr. Reynolds? Chandra.
I noticed in the, the letter from your neighbor that it said, "As long as the fences stay the same." Could you go back to the, is the fence in the picture, and would there be any changes to the fence? And where, is the fence in the back?
I don't think I have a photo of the fence in this presentation. I believe there's a fence running along the south property line.
Mr. Reynolds, would you like to come up and show us where the fence is? Might make it easier. Thanks, Nick.
There are two fences, I believe. Is this Mike?
You gotta press the button.
She has placed a fence from the front of my garage going out towards Urbana Avenue. I think that is the fence that she was concerned about. The other fence is a privacy fence that comes off the southwest corner of my garage and basically follows the property line straight back. The only change to the fence would be that, part of it would be garage instead of fence, but there is no, the fence won't be moved north or south in any direction.
Gotcha, just curious. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Mary Alice.
Hi, thanks for coming today. I had a question, so the existing north wall would be, would maintain, is it the north or the south? I'm not sure, but the, the wall that's on the property line would be in the exact same location?
Yes.
Okay, and the, the roof line, is that going to be extended, or is that also going to be exactly the same?
So, the overhang of the current garage is actually on the property line, and the new garage would have an overhang that's actually three inches from the property line, so it would technically be a bit further from the property line than the existing garage, if we're talking about the overhang, and the walls would both be nine inches from the property line.
So, if you wouldn't mind going back to some of the pictures, I was trying to figure out, I suppose my only concern would be water runoff in, in terms of the neighbor, but it sounds like the roof will be actually more in the lot than the existing roof.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. And then the picture that you have, the next one, if you wouldn't mind?
This one?
No, sorry, the other one of the house. Yeah, that one. So, so this is between, those are your stairs, is that right, that go into your house?
Yeah.
This side is not on your neighbor's side?
No, that's, that's my house in the picture.
Okay, all right, so that's your house in the picture. And then, you said that the fence wouldn't be moved, but you said that the wall would take the, take...
Well, if the garage is going to be set back 10 feet, then 10 feet of the fence, 10 feet of that fence would be taken out, so for the new garage to sit there.
Who owns the fence?
I do.
You own the fence?
It's inside my property line.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? James?
So, you mentioned a fence that your neighbor has put, that, that goes out in front of the garage. Is that on the property line, or is that on, on her side of the property line?
It's just on her side of the property line.
Okay, and it wouldn't be affected, because the garage is moving back?
That's correct.
But there'll be a gap that's not there now, correct?
Yeah, I suppose, if you go back to, again, the picture with the garage, so this front wall of the garage that you're looking at now would essentially be further to the west, 10 feet back further than it is now. What you can't see in that picture, or you could sort of see it, our two garages are side by side with about 18 inches to two feet between them.
So, that's her garage there on, on the left?
Yes, yes. So, instead of the front of the garage is lining up, the front of my garage would be back just a little bit.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there, Sharice?
So, I don't read, I don't read design stuff that great. What, what I'm, what it looks like is that you're moving, you're moving the garage back, and you're widening the driveway.
Slightly, yes.
Okay, well, I'm just, you know, because I'm looking at how, is that your, that's your side entrance?
Yes.
You have two entrances, a side entrance and a front entrance?
Correct.
Okay, so the side entrance, you're, you're going to be moving, in this picture that I'm seeing right here, right now, so you'll be, you'll be laying more concrete back to the garage, basically to the backyard, so that you could still have some kind of way to get to, there'll still be a path, or at least enough, enough of a path or width, so that you can get between the garage and the house?
Yes.
Is this one, okay.
That's one of the reasons the garage has to go back, because if it's, it's going to be, this garage is only 10 feet wide, if you put two cars in, you can't open the doors.
Yeah.
So, standard two-car garage is 24 feet, I'm going 22 because of limited space, but in order to put a 22-foot garage in, it has to go back, otherwise the garage runs into the house.
Okay.
There'll be no way to pass between the garage and the house.
And, okay, and you're going to widen the driveway a bit so that, so that the, the cars can line up next to each other?
Yes, ma'am.
Even if they don't go in the garage, but there'll be room for both of them?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Chris?
Just out of curiosity, are you, are you going to build the garage yourself?
No.
Okay, you're a professional contractor?
Yes.
And are you going to resurface the driveway a little bit, or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
The driveway, most of the driveway will be repaired as it is, but it's pretty broken up, so I figured I would do it all at one time.
Thank you.
Further questions? Chandra.
I'll offer a motion.
Lovely.
I move Ordinance Number 2022-11-048, an ordinance approving a major variance, garage variance, at 705 South Urbana Avenue, CBA case number 2022 MAJ07, for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Jaya. Any further discussion? Grace?
Thanks, just wanted to say thanks for coming in and doing the proper channels on this. I hope it hasn't been too, too tiring of a process, and thanks for investing in the neighborhood and your property like that. It looks like this garage has served its purpose for a good while, and it sounds like your neighbors are okay with it, and hopefully, it sounds like they'll appreciate looking at your new shiny garage, and hopefully you'll enjoy using it, so thank you.
Further comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. And as someone who lived with the garage that was actually built in like 1928 for a long time, I can appreciate your excitement about getting this new garage, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And with no further business before this council, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, Nick.
Thank you.